Good evening, everybody, and welcome to our scheduled meeting for the La Sure City Council dated May twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-one. At this time, we will call our meeting to order. And we'll do so by starting with the pledge of allegiance. A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Everybody's had an opportunity to look over the agenda for tonight. And at this time, I will accept any motions for the, maybe to amend the agenda. You all got that notice earlier today from our city administrator that we will remove item seven B. I think things are trying to get worked out there, so if anybody wants to make a motion to accept the minutes minus seven B in the regular agenda.
So moved Sullivan.
Second, Molly.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan, and thank you, Mr. Rosie.
Let's be clear, Mr. Sullivan, you said minutes, you meant the agenda.
I see, I meant agenda, thank you, thank you. We've had that seconded also, so I'll turn it over to Administrator Krugel, if you would, please.
Thank you, Mayor Kirby, Councilmember Croppman.
Yes.
Councilmember Lozey.
Hi.
Thank you, Councilmember Mahoney.
Hi.
Councilmember Sleeter.
Hi.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Hi.
Councilmember Swanberg.
Hi.
And Mayor Kirby.
Hi.
Motion passes, thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to the consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda are considered routine and have been made available to the city council at least two days in advance of the meeting. The items will be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests, in which event, the item will be removed from the agenda and considered in normal sequence. With that, I will turn it over to City Administrator Krugel. If you want to kind of go over these consent agendas with us and kind of give us a brief summary of what's going on with all of them, I believe there's about eleven or twelve out today.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Kirby. We have council minutes from the last meeting on May tenth. A revised version has been sent out for those. We have disbursement approvals for just over three hundred thousand dollars. Not much for large expenditures. We did have some engineering expenses and then our bi-monthly sales tax contribution to the Minnesota Department of Revenue. You're starting to see some things for the giant celebration trickle in as far as permits and approvals. One of them tonight is for the giant celebration temporary on-sale liquor license. That's something that we do every year. Next, we have the non-enclosed premises license. What this is, is this allows for the bar to serve alcohol outside in the right-of-way. So basically, when you have those tables outside, they'll be able to do that this year again, once the construction's over. Obviously, right now, they don't have much space. We have some personnel actions. We have a part-time position building and grounds maintenance. And what that does is really works at the community center and helps out there. And then we have a seasonal position, a recreational office assistant. So that's one thing to know. We have some designations of part-time and seasonal. We have a request from the Lions Club to use the Legion Park parking lot to do their pancake drive-up breakfast. They've done this in the past, and this is just the official approval from city council to do this. We have our first payment to the county for the CASA twenty-two project. Now, if you remember, we sold a bond for this back in two thousand and twenty. We've held on to those proceeds until this disbursement, so a large portion of it, just over three point six million, I believe, from memory, is it would be paid to the county. And this is the first payment, and there will likely be one more payment after the final acceptance of the work for that project. We have a surplus property declaration with a variety of items that we can declare surplus and then dispense of using our surplus property policy. We have another payment for storm sewer repair. I think the county was catching up on some invoices to the city. This was for a stormwater repair on Kingsway, and what we did is we just shared the cost of that. We have a two thousand and twenty-one street maintenance accept bids and award contract. So we went out for bid for these various projects throughout town, quite a few. Seal coat, crack seal, patching, curb work throughout the city that we've identified. This is part of our ten-year street maintenance plan to also have pairing some of these reconstruct projects. We have some of these maintenance projects. And what that does is it gets some of the streets, kind of some of the TLC that they need to kind of be better and last longer. So this is to accept those bids that we received and award that contract. And then last but not least is well number eight in the wellhouse to approve, basically authorize us to prepare plans and authorize us to bid that out. And that's a fall two thousand and twenty-one project. And just so everybody's aware, that is, we're looking to use PFA funding for that. So something that we didn't use for the water tower, but we can use for well number eight. So large consent agenda this time. I will entertain any questions if there are any.
Anybody?
Mayor Kirby, this is Mahoney. Just clarifying on four E on the agenda. It says personal actions for public works manager. Just confirming that it is for the building and grounds maintenance.
It is. Thank you for the note, and that was a typo on the memo title. That was transposed back onto the agenda, and it was actually from the previous personnel action. But this is for the building and grounds maintenance position and the recreation office assistant.
Thank you, Councilmember Mahoney. Anybody else? With that, I will entertain any motions to accept the consent agenda.
Councilmember Kroppman, so moved.
Thank you, Councilmember Kroppman. Seconded by Councilmember Swanberg. Any discussion, questions, concerns? If not, I will turn it over to the city administrator for the roll.
Thank you, Mayor Kirby. Councilmember Kroppman.
Hi.
Councilmember Lozey.
Hi.
Councilmember Mahoney.
Hi.
Councilmember Sleeter.
Hi.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Hi.
Councilmember Swanberg.
Hi.
And Mayor Kirby.
Hi.
Motion passes, thank you.
Moving on to public comment. If you wish to participate in public comment, you must sign up prior to the commencement of the meeting. Negative remarks about city staff or employees is not allowed. You will have a time limit of five minutes to comment. The total public comment period shall be thirty minutes for non-agenda items and thirty minutes per agenda item. Disruptive and disorderly behavior will not be tolerated. But this time, I would like to ask City Administrator Krugel if we have anybody that'd like to share anything.
Mayor Kirby, at this time, we haven't had anybody sign up prior to the meeting. And right now, none of the attendees that are in attendance right now are raising their hand. I think it's fair to give them a few seconds to raise their hand if they would like to participate. I'm not seeing anybody raising their hand at this moment.
Very good. Moving on then. Item number six, a public hearing tax abatement and general obligation bond issuance. If you want to take us down that road, Administrator Krugel?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Kirby, members of city council. Tonight, we have a public hearing that we have noticed in the paper and invited folks in to give comment about the two thousand and twenty-one A general obligation bond sale. Information about here shortly. We have to hold a public hearing per state statute to pass this, and that's why we've invited people. We do have Shannon Sweeney here tonight to kind of go over the summary of the public hearing. He will give some information about the bond sale. And then, once we do that, what we'll do is we'll ask city council to motion to open the public hearing. If there's anybody that is in attendance tonight that would like to participate in that public hearing, they can. And then, once we feel it's been closed, or there isn't anybody else who would like to comment, then we would close. And then, what we would do is staff is asking city council to consider two resolutions. One, for the tax abatement to fund a portion of the bond sale. And Mr. Sweeney will go into detail. I know there's a couple of questions about that. And then, the second one will be to actually award the bid to the apparent low bidder on the two thousand and twenty-one A bond sale. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Sweeney, and we'll go from there, and I'll be here to assist if needed.
Thank you, Jasper. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Shannon Sweeney with David Brown Associates. About a month ago, we initiated the process to put project financing in place for a variety of needs, including the Main Street extension. Under Minnesota statute, which cities are required to point to or essentially find authorization in for the issuance of bonds or borrowing money, there are a couple of alternatives for funding street projects. They include funding streets through the four-twenty-nine process that you're familiar with, where we levy special assessments against benefited properties. In this particular project, the Main Street extension, we didn't have special assessments that were being applied to the project. Second authority that's typically used is street reconstruction authority. And that particular authority doesn't allow for enhancements, and it also has capacity issues related to the issuance of those bonds and requires the adoption of a street reconstruction plan. That did not seem applicable in this instance, and so what we pointed to was tax abatement authority. Ultimately, it gives us authority to pledge a tax levy for the repayment of bonds associated with constructing public improvements, including streets. And so, in this instance, we use that authority to be able to borrow. We set about looking at about a million four fifty, revised it to a million four forty-five. And at the end of the day, based on the bids that we received for the issuance of the bonds, we're now down below a million four. We're actually at a million three ninety will be the tax abatement portion of the bond issue. That's funding, you know, essentially the street project costs associated with Main Street extension and some of the enhancements. Ultimately, what we're required to do for procedure under statute is identify areas of the community that are potentially benefited from the project. What we also have to be mindful of is those areas can never be included in a tax increment financing district during the life of a tax increment, or during the life of the abatement that's being pledged for the repayment of the bonds. And so, we like to stay away from commercial industrial areas because ultimately, projects happen there that sometimes require the use of tax increment financing. So in this instance, we focused on residential neighborhoods surrounding the downtown areas, deriving some benefit from the improvements associated with the extension of Main Street and the investments being made in downtown. That's what generated the parcel list that was attached to the notice. That's also attached to the resolution that you're going to be asked to approve. Essentially, we're pointing to those properties as driving some benefit, but at the end of the day, the levy that's made to pay the bonds is spread over the entire community in the same manner as any other general fund levy that's made by the city. And so, we're not picking on folks, we're not identifying properties to tax them any differently than anybody else. Ultimately, it's a procedural requirement under statute in order to borrow money to pay for public infrastructure that residents in and around the area of the downtown derive some benefit from. And so, that's what generated the parcel list. Again, they're not going to be treated any differently when it comes to levying a tax for the repayment of these bonds. It's just a procedural requirement, as we mentioned when we initiated this process, that we're required to comply with in order to borrow money. So happy to answer questions on that portion. Ultimately, again, we use this procedure in order to be able to borrow money as part of the seven million eight hundred and twenty thousand dollar bond issue that's funding a variety of projects, including that Main Street extension. Happy to answer your questions from the council or the public on this portion of the public hearing.
Anybody have anything for Mr. Sweeney? Please continue.
Ultimately, the council will be asked to adopt two resolutions following the public hearing. The first resolution is providing the property tax abatement for certain property located in the city of La Sure. Again, that's that parcel list I talked about that includes residential properties surrounding the downtown area. The second resolution is to award the sale of bonds. As I mentioned, we set about to issue eight million eighty thousand dollars. That's what the council authorized at the previous meeting. We're going to end up awarding seven million eight hundred and twenty thousand dollars in bonds because of the nature of the bids that we've received. If you look at the bid tabulation, we received a variety of bids from five different underwriters, and you'll notice that the spread near the top was a very tight margin, meaning folks knew what our bonds were worth today. It's good to see those narrow margins between bids because it means there's good competition ultimately for the purchase of your bonds. But each of those bids was made with a purchase price that exceeded the amount that we intended to borrow. That's because underwriters make money on the resale of bonds to investors, and they can choose to either keep that money for compensation or return it to the city essentially as additional compensation for the purchase of their bonds. Since all of these bids, it's called bond premium, and since all of the bids were premium bids, we ended up resizing or reducing the size of the issue because we're receiving supplemental cash in the form of bond premium from the resale of your bonds to investors. And so, we are able to borrow a little bit less. You'll see the coupons are a little bit higher, but at the end of the day, the net effective interest rate from the low bid was one point seven nine one percent. We'd projected something in the neighborhood of, oh, let's see, it was one point eight nine three percent, I believe, was our projection. The difference in payments between what you saw in your last schedule and what will be authorized if you decide to proceed this evening is the payments are about a hundred and twenty-seven thousand four hundred and eight dollars lower based on the bid submitted by FHN Capital Markets than what we showed you when we initiated the sale process. So we think that ultimately, we received a nice number of bids, very competitive bids, given the tight margins at the low end of the spectrum. We have sold bonds to FHN Capital Markets in the past. They're a good bidder. They like larger block sizes, which this issue included, and we would recommend awarding sale to FHN Capital Markets. Again, we're able to reduce the amount that we're borrowing based on the premium returned as part of the transaction. And so, you know, our outstanding principal balance will be a little bit less than what we set out to borrow, but we'll have the same amount of cash to pay the project costs that we set about to finance. So I know that gets a little complicated, but at the end of the day, bids came in a little bit lower than what we projected, and we think we have a good result. So happy to answer questions. There's a second resolution that you'll be able to, you'll be asked to act upon following the abatement resolution is the award of sale, and it essentially identifies FHN Capital Markets as the low bid, and we do recommend making that award. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sweeney. Anybody have any questions for Mr. Sweeney?
Mayor Kirby, Member Sullivan.
Yes, sir.
Hey, Shannon, can you go back and explain that premium return again?
Sure.
I kind of got lost in translation.
Sure, I know. It's a, it took me a little while to understand this concept as well when I got into the business. But ultimately, so we have an underwriter that's buying bonds from us, and they have a purchase price that ultimately can be, it can be the face amount of the bonds or the power amount. We were trying to sell eight million eighty thousand dollars. They could have offered to give us eight million eighty thousand dollars at a specific interest rate, and it would have been easy to understand and a simple transaction to process. In this instance, they said they were going to give us, oh, if I look at the bid tab, they were going to pay us eight million two hundred and eighty-seven thousand five hundred and thirty-three dollars to buy our eight million eighty thousand dollars worth of bonds. So that difference, that increase in what they're willing to pay us is called premium. At the end of the day, they were keeping a portion of that as compensation because underwriters, that's how they make their living, is they keep money for purchasing and then reselling bonds. But they were going to return about two hundred and sixty thousand of that to the city. And so, that money, that profit they're making on the resale is being given back to us or a portion of it. And rather than keep surplus funds that we didn't have a specific purpose for, we reduced the amount that we're borrowing by that amount. Does that help?
Yeah, that does. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Anybody else?
This is Member Sleeter.
Yes, sir.
I just wanted to verify that the parcel IDs that were identified in this table are not going to be taxed any differently during the duration of this abatement period than any other property in town.
That's correct. It was a procedural requirement in order to identify an area that benefits, but ultimately, this is the extent of it, is just identifying them in a notice.
Thank you.
Anybody else? If not, we can move on to the recommended action. Moving on to the approval of resolution R two thousand and twenty-one dash zero two eight, approving property tax abatement for certain properties located in the city of La Sure.
Mayor Kirby, if I may, I think it'd be appropriate to open up the public hearing first technically.
Okay.
For a motion first, and then I can go back one slide. A motion to open the public hearing, and then we can see if there's anybody in the public that would like to speak. Then we can record those comments, and then we can, a motion to close the public hearing, and then after that, then we can consider the two resolutions.
Moving to that, okay. Well, let's start with a, somebody give us a motion to open the public hearing at this time.
Motion, Councilmember Swanberg, motion to open the public hearing.
Sullivan and Swanberg seconded. Mr. Krugel, go ahead and take a roll.
Thank you, Mayor Kirby. Councilmember, sorry, Councilmember Kroppman.
Yeah, hi.
Councilmember Lozey.
Hi.
Councilmember Mahoney.
Hi.
Councilmember Sleeter.
Hi.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Hi.
Councilmember Swanberg.
Hi.
And Mayor Kirby.
Hi.
All right, motion passes. The public hearing is technically open right now, so if there's anybody from the public that would like to speak on this matter, they can do so by raising their hand through the go-to webinar module. We do have, I believe, five individuals in attendance today right now. So if any of those individuals in attendance would like to participate in the public hearing, please raise your hand at this time. And I think it's appropriate, we give them a few seconds to do so. And I'm not, I'm not seeing anybody raise their hands at this moment, so if city council feels appropriate, they can close the public hearing.
All right, at this time, I'll accept the motion to close the public hearing.
So moved, Councilmember Swanberg.
Thank you, Councilmember Swanberg. Second?
Second. Councilmember Lozey.
Thank you, Mr. Lozey. I'll turn it over to Administrator Krugel for a roll.
Thank you, Mayor Kirby. Councilmember Kroppman.
Hi.
Councilmember Lozey.
Hi.
Councilmember Mahoney.
Hi.
Councilmembers Sleeter.
Hi.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Hi.
Councilmember Swanberg.
Hi.
And Mayor Kirby.
Hi.
Motion passes, the public hearing is now closed.
Thank you.
So now, Mayor Kirby, members of the council, what we're looking at is a couple motions, one to approve resolution R two thousand and twenty, or R two thousand and twenty-one dash zero two eight, approving the tax, property tax abatement for certain property located in the city of La Sure. And then, the second motion is to award the sale of the two thousand and twenty-one A general obligation bond to FHN Capital Markets.
All right, we'll put it up to motions on the first resolution, R two thousand and twenty-one dash zero two eight.
So moved.
Thank you, who was that, I'm sorry?
Sullivan.
Thank you, Councilmember Sullivan. We got a second?
Second, Councilmember Lozey.
I heard Mr. Lozey first, so seconded by Mr. Lozey. Mr. Krugel, you want to take a roll, please?
Yes, I think it's appropriate to ask for discussion.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Any discussion, comments, concerns before we turn it over for a roll? All right, City Administrator Krugel.
Thank you, Mayor Kirby. Councilmember Kroppman.
Hi.
Councilmember Lozey.
Hi.
Councilmember Mahoney.
Hi.
Councilmembers Sleeter.
Hi.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Hi.
Councilmember Swanberg.
Hi.
And Mayor Kirby.
Hi.
Motion passes, thank you very much.
Thank you. Moving on to approval of resolution R two thousand and twenty-one dash zero two nine, resolution awarding the sale of the two thousand and twenty-one general obligation bond to FHN Capital Markets.
Councilmember Lozey, motion approved.
Thank you, Councilmember Lozey. Anybody want to second that? Councilmember Kroppman, nice shot. Any other discussion, comments, concerns regarding R two thousand and twenty-one dash zero two nine? If not, I'll turn it over to Administrator Krugel.
Thank you, Mayor Kirby. We'll go Councilmember Kroppman.
Hi.
Councilmember Lozey.
Hi.
Councilmember Mahoney.
Hi.
Councilmember Sleeter.
Hi.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Hi.
Councilmember Swanberg.
Hi.
And Mayor Kirby.
Hi.
Motion passes, thank you very much.
Moving on to item number seven, A CASA twenty-two in Coventry Road opening. We've all been kind of exposed to this subject quite a bit lately. I will turn it over to Administrator Krugel. Give us a little summary, if you would.
Thank you, Mayor Kirby, members of city council. As you alluded to, we've been talking about this pretty regularly in May so far. I do have Corey Beanfang, city engineer, here as well to talk about this and kind of go over what we're proposing. It's the exact same resolution that you saw on the tenth. And then, Corey, I believe, will give a little recap of the public meeting that we had on a week from today, or a week ago today at the site of Coventry and CASA twenty-two. So I'll hand it over to Corey.
Thank you, Jasper. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and city council. So as the intro here kind of alluded to, we're on the third phase, I guess I'd call of this decision relating to Coventry Road opening. We had the review and the draft resolution, the previous city council meeting there two weeks ago, and then last Monday night, a week ago from tonight, we had the open house on-site there for that Q and A session. And then, we find ourselves here tonight, being the city council meeting where we have the final resolution that we intend to, you know, to present and are asking consideration of, to make a decision here to move forward with the opening, if so, chosen by the approval of that resolution. And then, consistent to, you know, some messaging that we had last fall as part of some of the previous discussions and analysis regarding Coventry and the opening, is that, I guess, that milestone date of June first being the point of actual implementation. If that is chosen to open and move forward with that, we would remove the temporary barricades consisting of those, of the block, of the concrete blocks, as well as the temporary construction barricades, and then fully implement the opening and function of that intersection. So if you don't mind, Jasper. So as we discussed at the last city council meeting, we had intention, we noticed and provided postcards and... So, um, a- as we discussed at the last city council meeting, we had intention, we, we noticed, um, and provided postcards and, um, social media advertising there for that neighborhood meeting. And we held that out onsite. Really, the intent was, it was, it was a beautiful night for it. Um, the intent was to be able to have folks, you know, appreciate the, the improvements that were made with the project, be able to assess, um, you know, the function of the intersection, get kind of a boots-on-the-ground perspective, the site triangles that we were, um, talking about. Had a display there that, that tried to, you know, show, uh, the site decision triangles and, and really the visibility of those objects that we use to, to make that engineering determination of whether, um, you know, the standards are achieved or whether they're not. Um, you know, summary of that meeting, I don't know if the obstructed attendance was taken, but I think we were somewhere, uh, in the excess of two dozen to, to less than thirty in attendance, um, consisting most primarily of residents, of course, but we had, um, you know, multiple city council members. Um, we had city staff, and then we had representatives from both the fire and police. Jasper started out with an introduction and then I went in and, and provided a presentation, a lot of the same content that was presented to city council at the meeting on the, on the tenth, just really recapping the process and, and decision points of how we got here and, and ultimately the reasons for support of the opening. Um, and I say we, there was representation from both sides. There, there was definitely, um, vocalized, uh, opposition, um, consistent to some of the previous meetings. And then, um, you know, there was also vocalized support. Um, probably, probably the most vocalized support for the opening, at least publicly, I think was witnessed, uh, uh, last, last Monday. Um, and I say all said and done, we, we started sharply at six P M. and, and, um, for folks lingering and it was, we were, we were out there for about an hour. So, um, I think a good amount of time to, to have that dialogue back and forth. There's a lot of good, uh, a lot of good questions, a lot of good discussion. Uh, most of it, I think, was, was a repeat, but it was, you know, I think it was, um, certainly felt like a value to be able to find an opportunity for that, for that openness of, of, of dialogue. So if you don't mind, Jasper. Um, so really, you know, to, to try to support and, and be able to provide the background tonight for that decision. Um, you know, a lot of this is pulled or at least, you know, in, in verbiage included in the resolution to provide context and support for the decision. But, um, really this emphasis on the as-built, confirming that, you know, what was intended to be designed was built. Um, and then that built, that, that as-built condition supports, um, those engineering standards, uh, primarily relating to that decision site. Um, you know, the opening is supported by the transportation plan and, and admittance that, um, it better, betters and, and provides value for greater than just, you know, the one block that's located on, on Coventry there. It's that, that neighborhood connectivity, that opportunity for future growth. Um, and then I, the, the opening is also supported by that response time, that, that, that commitment of emergency services and where seconds matter. Um, you know, having that connectivity and that, that, that quick access, um, certainly there's a value there and, and we've, we've heard from, from those folks that are gonna be able to, to appreciate that benefit. And then ultimately, um, you know, just re- recapturing and covering that the road jurisdiction now is, is ultimately at least, at least Sure County because of the turnback, um, acting as that road authority and, and having, you know, impact in the packet, um, the, the, uh, you know, support of that this is a city decision because of the local road, but because of, uh, it accessing a county road, having, having that support from the county. So one of the things, um, that, that is new for this meeting, um, is, is really understanding the decision tonight is, is to bring forward, um, some industry practice when it comes to changing of an, of an intersection or changing of traffic control. Um, and it's, uh, the proposed im- implementation of some temporary signing to enhance a change. Um, you know, understandably, in, in the transportation world and, and, and road work and, and road improvements, there, there are realities of, of changes to traffic patterns and traffic control, whether it's the, uh, removal of signal or adding of a four-way stop. There's instances, um, opening of an intersection, you know, direct tie to Coventry, um, where there's, there's value in, in acknowledging to the road user that there is a change. Um, and so within the packet and as part of my presentation, I wanted to capture that, um, you know, per guidance from MINDODD and, and just, uh, you know, traffic engineering. There's, there's recommendations to help enhance. And I think the, the signs that are most applicable to our situation is, as you see on your screen here, a new traffic pattern ahead. That'd be a, a black text on an orange sign, something that's, uh, very prevalent right now. Um, those are further accented with, with orange flags, rarely typical of what you see with like load restriction signing. Um, and those would be placed on all approaches. So that'd be both directions of Elmwood, um, and then as well as Coventry. Uh, just adds a, a little extra awareness, um, that, you know, that, that, that motor should be accepting, expecting something different or something that they maybe previously haven't, um, had it to, had to account for. Not, not acknowledging that anything's unsafe. It's just, it's just a, a literalness to, to that there is a change here. Um, and those signs are left in place and then guidance would say a couple of weeks. I, I don't think there's any harm in doing that longer. Um, but that would be something if so chosen tonight to move forward with. As part of that opening on June one, we would have these signs in place to, to add, uh, to, to add to, you know, the success of the opening and, and really living true to that standard, that recommendation that, um, you know, would be advised in a situation like this. So, um, all that said, I, I'd be more than happy to answer any questions or, or have any additional, um, you know, uh, dialogue on this. But really, ultimately, the ask is tonight, um, at, at, is for city council to consider the adoption of that resolution um, in final form tonight, um, with that, that resolution number of zero two five, um, authorizing the opening of Coventry Road effective on June one. So with that, Mr. Mayor Council, I'd, I'd be, uh, more than happy to, to address anything that, that you should have.
City engineer Beanfang and, uh, city administrator Kruegel, I want to thank you for, for your, uh, time last week. I, I know it's not easy when people start to get a little passionate about things. They start to get a little personal also. And I, I want to thank you guys for, uh, being very professional with your delivery out there, and it was very thorough and, um, and, and we appreciate it. And we also appreciate the comments from our emergency services, or at least the presence from this, emergency services out there last week and also the council people that were there also. So to everybody, thank, thank you. I, I would like to open this up to anybody who would like to make a comment right now, anything?
Mayor, this member Schleeder.
Yes, sir.
As long as there's been dissent in the past, I just wanted to make a statement on my position. Even though there's a group of residents that remain to oppose to the opening, there's no valid reason remaining to keep the intersection closed. The Casada twenty two reconstruction removed the line-of-sight issue. That was a problem with the intersection in the past. La Sure is a river valley community with many hills. Concerned with the greater slope at the intersection are similar or less than those of intersections from Meg Street at the south of the city to Dakota Street on the north end of the city and every street in between. This is a public street and intersection. It is not a private street or development. And there was support at the meeting last week from some residents to open it. Emergency services, including the police, fire and ambulance, support reopening. And the street department will be able to better maintain the road when they have through access. Concerns about speed and traffic will need to be monitored to address safety issues, just like in every other portion of the city. I support the opening of the intersection.
Thank you, councilmember Schleeder. I appreciate those comments. Well said. Anybody else?
Mayor Kirby, I would like to make a motion to approve the resolution R twenty twenty one dash zero two five, authorizing the opening of Coventry Road effective June one, twenty twenty one.
Thank you, Mr. Lozey, for reading that and, and, uh, offering that, um, uh, motion. We have, anybody want to second that motion?
Councilman Lozey, second that.
Thank you, councilmember Lozey. Any discussion, concerns, comments before we turn over to the roll?
Mayor Kirby, this is.
Yes, Mr. Sullivan, go ahead.
I just do like to address, uh, you know, I think all of us received an email today from a concerned citizen. Um, I did take that deep into consideration, um, swayed both ways with this throughout this process. Um, but I think, you know, he referenced two hundred signatures on, on this petition. I think overall, I think there're just as many people that want that road open, um, just in conversation. Um, I think we would see that flip. I thi- I think we would see just as many that would sign a petition saying they want it open. So I just wanted to make sure we noted that email today.
Duly noted. Thank you, uh, councilmember Sullivan. So that said, uh, we've had a, uh, motion made by councilmember, um, Swanberg. It's been seconded by, uh, councilmember Lozey. With that, I'm going to turn it over to, uh, administrative Kruegel.
Thank you, Mayor Kirby. Uh, we'll go councilmember Kropman.
Hi.
Councilmember Lozey.
Hi.
Councilmember Mahoney.
Hi.
Councilmember Schleeder.
Hi.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Hi.
Councilmember Swanberg.
Hi.
And Mayor Kirby.
Hi.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, this is councilmember Kropman. Just to be clear, were there any citizens that signed up or wanted in any way to speak to this tonight? We didn't have any before. I just want to double check.
Uh, I can address that if, if I may, Mayor Kirby. Um, uh, there was nobody that signed up in advance of the meeting and, um, there, there aren't any, there isn't anybody that I believe is, is, has raised their hand during this, this, uh,
Discussion. Okay. Thank you. I just want to make sure we were recording that to the public if need be. So I appreciate that comment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to our last regular agenda, item seven C, uh, refuse contract, uh, consideration. So, Mr. Kruegel, if you want to give us a little insight on that?
Yeah, uh, thank you, Mayor Kirby, members of city council. Um, this, this is a product of a meeting in twenty twenty, um, that we discussed either moving forward with an RFP process for, for refuse and recycling services or to do a direct negotiation with, uh, waste management, our current provider, um, to extend their contract. And, and I took direction from city council and, and has been, have been working with waste management to, to get this contract done. Um, and the contract that was included in the packet, um, I'll kind of summarize it for you, uh, and, and, and then we can have a little discussion about it. But, uh, the, the contract term is a five-year term. Um, it, it technically would start on, uh, January one of twenty twenty one and goes through twenty twenty five. It provides refuse and recycling services to residential customers. Um, uh, not everybody might be familiar, but, um, if you are a commercial or industrial, uh, uh, property owner in, in La Sure, you don't have to use waste management. You, you, you sure can. Uh, but this is all, this is, this is basically mandated to all residential, uh, properties in town. Um, so, so, and that's for refuse and recycling. Um, there's a ninety days notice from either party to terminate the agreement. Um, there will be an annual rate adjustment of two point five percent. Um, this is a change from the last contract. Uh, essentially, there was a, a, a consumer price index reference in there, um, that was generally about two point five on average every year. Um, just for the sake of simplicity, we put a two point five percent, so we know what that is, uh, every year. Um, in some, some years it might be higher, the C P I, some years it might be lower. Right now, uh, the C P I is trending toward being a little higher than two point five percent. Uh, just to make that note, um, there is a, uh, um, an added fuel surcharge clause in there, and that only kicks in if, if diesel fuel goes above five dollars a gallon. Um, so what that means is that if, if, if diesel fuel goes above five dollars a gallon, we would then add that surcharge onto the customer bills. Uh, we would have to amend our, our utility rates to, to do that. Um, right now, we're still a little ways away from five dollars a gallon, but that's something to, to, to look at. Um, or to keep an eye on. Um, waste management continues to provide, uh, the, the recycling and refuse service at twenty-eight city-owned properties. So that's built in. Um, we will continue to have spring and fall cleanup days. Um, they'll continue to do two five hundred dollar annual scholarships and, and those are, uh, those are then given to the, to the school, and then they disperse those accordingly. Um, there's a one thousand dollar annual donation for the holiday parade. Uh, so that goes towards the, the, um, the organization of, of that parade in December. Generally, I think it's that last Friday or that first Friday in January. Um, one thing that's new is there will be a twenty-yard, uh, mutually located cardboard recycling program. And what this program does is, is it allows the community to, to put cardboard boxes, they were cardboard, um, in a receptacle, twenty-yard kind of roll-off with a, with a cover on it. And then what waste management will do is they'll periodically, uh, once that is full, they'll pull that, that twenty-yard, uh, roll-off and then they'll bring that recycling in. And then we'll get a, a, a check back from waste management. And this is a program that will run as a city and will allow, um, different service organizations to be able to apply to be part of this program. But then those service organizations will then get the proceeds of that, uh, those, that cardboard recycling. Um, that can be, uh, it's estimated based on the size of our community that that might be five hundred to a thousand dollars every quarter, um, depending on how much it's used. So it's, it could be a significant amount of money for, um, in a, in another community I've worked in. Um, you know, the, the Cub Scouts or Boy Scouts or, you know, anybody like that can apply and then city council takes, takes that into consideration. And basically, we get them lined up so that there's a, there's a priority list. So, um, there will be a period of time where we solicit for applications for that and then city council will take some action on prioritizing that. Um, and then the, the last thing that, that really has changed or that will change if approved is that the electronic recycling will be collected at the waste management transfer, transfer station. So, uh, there will still be, I believe, twelve of these boxes. We, we, we have, uh, four currently. Um, and, or I believe two currently. And then anything else above these boxes are, if you, if you return, uh, recycled electronics, um, they're, they're not that big, but you can put your electronics in there. Right now, it's housed at the street shop. It's, it's fairly inconvenient and inconsistent. We have one day a week where you can come in and, and, and drop off your electronics. Um, in this case, and, and there's obviously a marketing and education component. Um, individuals can go down to the, the, uh, transfer station, uh, the waste management transfer station and bring down their electronics recycling. Um, they'll have to bring in an ID, uh, that has a little sewer address on it, and then they'll be able to recycle those, uh, electronics, just like they did. Um, uh, or do preview or do right now. It'll just be, there'll be better hours and, and more access to it. So, um, I think from a, from a staff standpoint, that, that was something that was desired because it's, it's a challenge to kind of coordinate that and, and you get people that are bringing electronics in when, when the hours aren't open. And, you know, we, we end up probably taking them anyway, uh, but it's, 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 it's a challenge. So that's the basic summary of the contract. Not much, uh, um, just a few changes, but, um, the, the changes that we requested, uh, were included in, in the, in the contract. Waste management was, uh, you know, a very good partner in renegotiating these. So what we're looking for tonight is a motion to approve that attached contract with waste management to provide residential refuse and recycling services to the city of La Sure through twelve thirty-one twenty twenty-five. Um, one thing I will note is that I, I worked really closely with Mike Corey, the city attorney, to, to revise and, and develop this contract as well. So, so he has looked at the final version. He has approved of it. Um, so, so it has already went through the legal, uh, legal review. So with that, I'll entertain any questions anybody may have.
Where will that cardboard recycling be located?
Yes, very good question. So it's a mutually agreed-upon location. Um, we're gonna have to, we, I actually asked it at our staff meeting this morning where we think it would be best, and there's some, um, conflicting, I guess, differing opinions about it. So if you have an idea of where you think that would be good to have located, where it's not necessarily an eyesore or burdensome to residents and businesses, but still accessible. Um, but not too hidden either where it's easy for somebody to throw a couch by it or something like that, too. So, you know, some of the ideas were, uh, you know, the, the park shop, um, street, uh, shop area. Um, you know, we have, uh, the ability to have a camera put up there if we need to. Um, you know, uh, possibly in the, um, uh, the area that, that the, the city, uh, acquired some property, um, next to the wastewater treatment plant. Um, that's a little bit kind of, I guess, probably not as high of a, um, a score as far as I'm concerned. Um, but if you have an idea of, of where we could do it, maybe there's a, a community partner that would be willing to partner with us that, that, that you could recommend or, or make that connection. Um, we're open to, to any suggestions.
Anybody have anything else?
Yes, this is councilmember Kropman. Jasper, would you please address the electronic recycling? It has been a free service in the past, unlike if you take it to the tri-county recycling or you have to pay to recycle electronics. Can we be clearer that this is a free service for our citizens, our residents?
Yep, um, good question, good, good clarifying question. Um, it Yep, um, good question, good, good clarifying question. Um, it it is free. Uh, right now, uh, they give us two of these electronics boxes. And what we've been doing in the la- in in the last part of our seven-year contract with Waste Management. Um, because I I guess the the culture and society that we live in, there's a lot of disposable electronics that people have. And and things don't tend to last as long. So we've went from uh, you know, two boxes being adequate in uh, what would it be, twenty fourteen? Um, to now we're purchasing either uh ten to twelve boxes. So so the difference between that two and twelve, we're actually as a city using some of our revenues from our refuse fund to still provide that service. Um, and what we've done is we've included twelve boxes in that to kind of adjust for that kind of cultural change that we're seeing with 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 a lot of these disposable electronics that people just get rid of. Um, you know, computer monitors, TVs, things like that, that are, you know, a lot more inexpensive than they were, um, you know, seven years ago. And and people generally just just throw them away instead of repairing them. So it is free, um, up to twelve boxes. Um, and and well, we can address it uh after that. If we need to purchase more boxes or something like that, we can address it. But I think twelve should be adequate, at least for the time being.
Thank you.
Yep.
Mayor Kirby, Member Sullivan.
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
Jasper, I've got a couple of questions for you in regards to the contract. When I was looking through it, there were a couple of things that caught my attention. And I know they're not new, but I seen the thousand dollars for the holiday parade. Is that money the city receives or does that get turned back over to like the Chamber of Commerce?
So, um, it could be either or, right? Because the city city participates in it and the and the chamber does. What we would work with is the chamber and and whatever we would need to do um to to use that for something other than, you know, in kind, we would, we would use it for that. So um, I know that the the chamber has 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 received some of it or we've used some of it for some of those things. But we would work together to utilize that. It just wouldn't get consumed by the city um or the chamber. It would be some some mutual decision on on some things.
Okay. And then the other question I had and down that same lines is the giant days. I seen there was a roll off and multiple garbage cans provided. Is that for, I mean, are we doing that on behalf of the city or are we doing that on behalf of the chamber?
Well, technically, it's 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 on behalf of the city in our park. So I think if you've been to Giant Celebration, you've noticed the the law, the the receptacles that you see in in Legion Park. Uh, but it's just, it's a, it's a product of it. You know, I know that the Giant Celebration isn't a technically affiliated with the city. But we do uh quite a bit of in-kind um work with the chamber or not even the chamber with the Giant Celebration Committee. Um, and but but technically, it would be with the city. We're just providing those receptacles to the the Giant Celebration group.
Right. Perfect. Then my last question for you then is during these conversations with Waste Management, was there discussion in regards to them doing a better job with making sure the garbage is getting into their trucks and not on our cities' streets?
There was, um, you know, we have a, we have a formal complaint uh kind of hotline, a a person that we can talk to. So if you're you're noticing that happening, let us know. Um, call up to to City Hall, the six four oh one, the six six five six four oh one number. And Cory uh at the front desk uh has a really good relationship with Waste Management and if if we notice something, there it's there. Um, and and they obviously don't want to want that happening because they could get a ticket from our police department. So um, I know we've had some issues with that in the past and and we've we've kind of addressed it. But um, you know, with with people putting loose garbage in in their receptacles versus having it in a bag. But um, really, it's just reporting it, us talking to them about it and and getting the issue because they don't want that happening either.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Anybody else? Otherwise, we'll move on to the approved uh action to um to approve the uh contract of Waste Management to provide residential refuse and recycling services to the city of the sewer through twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-five. Can we get a motion?
We'll move, Sullivan.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Mr. Swanberg, thank you for seconding that. Any discussion, comments, concerns? If not, we'll turn over to Administrator Krugel.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Kirby. Uh, we have Councilmember Krogman.
Aye.
Councilmember Lozey.
Aye.
Councilmember Mahoney.
Aye.
Councilmember Schleter.
Aye.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Aye.
Councilmember Swanberg.
Aye.
And Mayor Kirby.
Aye.
All right, motion passes. Thank you very much.
Moving on to the last item of today's, tonight's meeting, uh, comments, reports and items of appreciation from our council persons. If anybody's got anything you want to share, this is your time, this is your platform. So we will start with Councilmember Krogman. Mr. Mayor, I do not have anything. Thank you. Thank you. Move on to Councilmember Lozey.
I got nothing either.
Thank you, Councilmember Lozey. Councilmember Mahoney.
I don't have anything tonight to discuss either.
Oh, for three, Councilmember Schleter.
On Wednesday, the nineteenth, we had an H R A. Meeting, previous director Mokow attended her last meeting and new director Bishusha. Attended her first meeting, so we had some continuity. I also wanted to note that I have received some complaints from some citizens here on Main Street in the past week about the speed of truck traffic entering and exiting on South Main Street. I just wanted to bring that to your attention. And the Lee Sore County officials meeting is this Wednesday at the Montgomery Legion Club. The topic is going to be Lee Sore County broadband, in case anyone was interested.
Thank you very much. Uh, moving on to Councilmember Sullivan.
Uh, the only thing I have denied is something I forgot earlier when we were talking about the Coventry Road opening. Jasper, I'm not sure if Cory's still on, but I, my recommendation would be to keep those signs up longer than the two weeks. I think that would be beneficial. And that's it.
Um, I'm here.
Thanks, Cory.
I'll make that change, Councilmember Sullivan.
Hey, thank you, Councilmember Sullivan. Uh, Councilmember Swanberg.
Uh, just a thank you to the council members who were able to make it to the Monday meeting regarding the Covent Coventry Road issue. Um, special thanks to Administrator Krugel. Um, sorry I wasn't able to be there. And uh, I appreciate your professionalism and if it got personal, uh, I think that's embarrassing. Um, but I wanted to thank those of you who were in attendance that night. Thank you all for being there.
Thank you, Councilmember Swanberg. Well said. Uh, I have nothing myself tonight, other than I might talk with uh Councilmember uh Sullivan and Administrator Krugel maybe tomorrow regarding Community Center Task Force. We maybe need to get a little updated on that, but we can, we can talk about that tomorrow or later in the week. That's all I have. Uh, Administrator Krugel, anything you want to share?
Um, nah, just briefly, um, this I think will be our last fully remote meeting. So the the June fourteenth meeting uh will be in person. Um, there will be a uh a remote option. So I think we're gonna try this, we'll call it a hybrid model, uh, where the public will also be able to participate in uh in the meeting itself from home if they would like. And then if um, it 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 appears that some of the the changes to open meeting law will be approved, um, I believe. Um, and that'll, that'll give more flexibility to to city council members to attend these meetings if they if they are uh ill or 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 unable to attend because of uh some sort of sickness. So um, that'll, everybody should be prepared to 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 be in the the meeting. If you're not able to attend or would not like to, um, you still, I guess, technically would have the option to do so from home. Uh, we still under are under the emergency uh declaration uh under two technically yet. Um, so so we do, we can still operate in that manner. Um, but uh, you know, with the CDC uh guidelines being uh lifted and shifting towards uh, you know, uh, not needing to be uh masked in indoors. Um, under certain situations, that'll give us some flexibility to to move towards in-person meeting. So um, it'll be a little bit, uh, probably uh, I don't know, it'll it'll be hard to break old habits. You know, we've been doing this for over a year and and doing the roll call and things like that. We don't need to do that anymore if we're in person. So um, there'll be some efficiencies gained, but um, you know, bear with us while we while we make this transition back to in-person. Uh, because it will be a little bit odd and I think people have grown accustomed to this virtual uh option. So um, if there are any council members that that have um a- anything that they'd like to discuss with me, pre- please reach out between now and and the fourteenth. We do have, uh, I think about as long of a break as we possibly could between this meeting and the next one. Um, so so please reach out if you do have any questions. That's all I have.
Hey. Thank you. Looking forward to meet with everybody in person. This will be a new experience for some of us and and uh, I'm sure the transition will go well. With that said, I'm looking for one swift motion to close tonight's meeting. All those in favor. Just say, everybody say aye.
Aye.
You better take a motion.
Thanks. Thank you. I I declare this meeting adjourned. We'll see you all in three weeks.
All right.
Thank you.